I think we're good. I got a bunch of alerts on my phone and in my browser, but yeah, we're good.
Okay, so we'll get started in just a couple of minutes. Call attendance. Ms. Cazara? Ms. Cazera, are you here? Here. Mr. Little?
Here.
Dr. Nolish is not present this evening. Ms. Philpott?
Here.
Mrs. Ponyatowski? Here. Mrs. Reed?
Mrs. Reed?
Me here.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Here.
Mrs. Spade?
Here.
Mr. Witherall? Mr. Witherall? Dr. Manarino?
I'm here.
Dr. Williams?
Here.
Mrs. Matthew? Is Mrs. Matthew present?
Yes, here.
Mr. Muth?
Here.
Mrs. Pellet?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Ms. Fleischer?
Here.
Ms. Shulley?
Here.
Mrs. Reeger?
Here.
And I am also present. I'd like everybody to please rise for a moment of silence and salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome everybody again to the April 20th, 2020 North Hills School Board Meeting with Action. I'd like to announce that the board held executive session conference calls on the following dates to discuss personnel issues and legal matters. Friday, March 13th, 2020, Monday, March 16th, 2020. On Thursday, March 19th, 2020, we had two meetings. Thursday, April 2nd, 2020, and Wednesday, April 15th, 2020. Are there any other board members who would like to make comments at this time? Mrs. Reed? Let me unmute you. Go ahead, Mrs. Reed.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank the following people for seeing that I was able to attend this evening. My iPad broke, and they believe it's the keyboard isn't working. But thanks to Pat Manarino, Katie, I forget her last name, Tech, and of course Lori Reeger. If I could, I'd give her a standing ovation for everything she does. Thank you very much. I made it.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed.
Pat laughing. Pat?
You're welcome, Kathy.
I'm gonna...
This is just out of curiosity, and that isn't there this evening, and she was chair of the Budget Committee. Shouldn't the Chair of the Budget Committee be there when we're voting on this tonight? I have a problem with that.
Unfortunately, Dr. Nolish had a work commitment and had to...
I thought they were closed, the schools up there in Ohio.
Yeah, no, she's, she's working. So do any other board members have any other comments this evening? Public comments? No? Okay, I'd like to ask if any of our attendees have any public comments on agenda items only. If you do, please feel free to raise your hand virtually, and I will bring you up to speak. And while you are looking for the virtual raise hand button, I'll just read our public policy comment, our public, uh, public participation policy very quickly. We would like to invite any resident taxpayer or employee of the North Hills School District who wishes to address the board to come forward at this time. The board does reserve the right to limit the amount of time allotted for public discussion of any particular speaker or issue. Some of your concerns can be quickly addressed following your comments, while others may require more research and discussion. When appropriate, you are welcome to further discuss your concerns with us following this meeting. We appreciate your interest. I do not see anybody raising their hand for public comment at this time for agenda items. There will be an opportunity to make a comment on non-agenda items at the end of the meeting. I will next move on to the minutes from April 16th, 2020. I move that the board approve the minutes of April 16th, 2020, of the April 16th, 2020 legislative meeting.
This is Dee Spade. I move. We accept.
Thank you. I'll take a roll call vote then. Ms. Cazera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Ms. Philpott?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed? Oh, you're muted, Mrs. Reed. Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
And I am also in favor, so the motion carries eight to zero. I'm very pleased to say that our student representatives have joined us this evening, Ellie Fleischer and Hannah Shulley, and I believe that they have a report to share with us. So I'll hand it over to Ellie and Hannah.
Okay, I'll start. So we kind of just wanted to check in, kind of just with the board and anyone who's watching, and just kind of give an update on how virtual learning is going for us. We're both juniors, and we found that our teachers have really made this like a very learning environment and also very willing to help us if we do have those concerns. One thing I really like about it is our teachers are holding office hours on Zoom. So say we have a question on like an assignment or something like that, we can always log in and ask them that. And they're also being very lenient with assignments. Say we need some extra time, they're always willing to help. And for me, like I have AP testing coming up. So today in AP US history, we actually talked over the test, and our teacher was very willing to give us some pointers she had. And Ms. Snack really did a great job of just kind of going through what it was going to be like, and it just made me feel a lot better, you know, coming up for this, the first ever online AP exam. So I'm just really happy with how North Hills is handling virtual learning.
Good luck with your AP exams.
Thank you.
Um, so I was kind of similar. I feel like the teachers have like adjusted to the online learning now, and they're being like, they're not, they're letting you have extra time on assignments if you need them, like Ellie said, and are holding like office hours and are answering emails like whenever we have a question. So my AP English teacher, Mr. Kane, I really like how he's setting up his virtual learning. He's like giving us like a site, like a layout of our whole week and like our assignment, so we can get ahead if we had time, if we wanted. And I really like how he's doing that, and I think a lot of our teachers have adjusted now, and it's going really well.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that update. I really appreciate you guys attending this evening. Um, all right, we will move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Manarino?
So today marks seven weeks since our students and teachers were last in a traditional classroom. And it's incredible to think about what we've accomplished in those seven weeks. So again, I want to thank our students, our families, our teachers, and our administrative team. What we have done in less than two months' time is remarkable, and we could not have done it without each and every one of you each and every day. We know it's been tough, and it hasn't been ideal, but we can do this. In fact, we are doing this. The good news is tomorrow is May. All righty. There are just 20 school days left until the end of the year, and we have just four weeks to go. We know that students are anxious to get back into their buildings to retrieve personal items that might have been left in lockers, and we are working to formulate a plan to allow this when it is safe to do so. We are aiming for the first week in June, but in the meantime, we assure you that your items are safe in all of our lockers and will remain so as they were on March 12th. We will also be collecting all district-issued iPads, textbooks, and library books during the first week of June. As you will hear in a few minutes when we discuss next year's budget, we will be trading in the current district iPads for a new fleet of iPads to distribute to all students in grades K-12 next school year. Because we are trading in the entire iPad fleet, we need to be certain that the iPads are returned in full working condition. But in lieu of returning the iPad, families will have the option to purchase the district-issued device for $100. Stay tuned for future communications about iPad purchase opportunities in the coming weeks. As for the end-of-the-year celebrations and graduations, I'm sure you've seen the communications about things we're planning on our website and social media starting tomorrow for our seniors. We are also planning a cap and gown and yearbook distribution, and we will be releasing all of those details as soon as possible. We also have some additional and exciting things happening to firm up, that we're hoping to firm up, I'm sorry, we're hoping to firm up next week, including a variation of our graduation that could take place at Materelli Stadium on Saturday, May 30th. So class of 2020, please hold this date, Saturday, May 30th. We will be sure to let you know as soon as we finalize all of our details. We have also been working with our parent organizations and have begun discussing ways that we can honor our fifth, sixth, and eighth-grade students this summer, assuming it is safe to do so. The bottom line is we don't know what the future holds. We don't know what we'll be able to do and what we won't be able to do, but we are doing the best we can with the information that we have, and we thank you for your continued patience and your support.
Thank you, Dr. Manarino. We will move on to finance. As previously mentioned, Dr. Nolish is not here this evening, so I will be handling the finance items, and I have a few introductory remarks that she asked me to read on her behalf. Tonight, we are presenting and taking action on the proposed final budget, which we are required to submit to the state. This budget will be the basis for discussion and public comments tonight, as well as during the May and June board meetings. Changes may be made to this proposed budget if new financial information emerges during the next month as we work to develop this final budget. We typically vote to put the final budget on the legislative agenda at our first workshop meeting in June, which this year will be June 4th. We will then vote on the final budget on June 11th. We have known all along that 2020 to 2021 would be a tight budget year, as this is the year which will complete the shift of moving sixth grade from the elementary schools to the middle school, and we continue to manage our enrollment growth. But no matter how difficult it might be, we believe that a zero-tax increase budget with no furloughs is the right thing to do for our community at this time, when all of our North Hills families and residents are coping with the economic impacts of COVID-19. So with that in mind, I will pass this over to Mr. Muth to present tonight's preliminary final budget.
Just expressed by Board President Mathis on behalf of Dr. Nolish, and as Dr. Manarino indicated a couple of weeks ago in his board presentation, we are not going to have a tax rate increase for the upcoming 2021 budget. Our first slide simply summarizes projected revenues and requested expenditures of $83.7 million. Obviously, it is not just by pure happenstance that these dollar amounts wind up being equivalents. Traditionally, the revenue budget is derived based upon recent historical trends, knowledge of proposed budget funding from the state and federal governments, and current and future anticipated economic conditions. Budgeting for the 2020-2021 school year, revenues was proceeding along in a similar manner, until the sudden suspension of nonessential business operations across the Commonwealth was announced. When the shelter-in-place-like mandate was extended through at least today, the potential impact on our budget became more pronounced. Needless to say, the revenue budget has undergone multiple revisions to get us to this point this evening, and there remains a level of uncertainty within the assumptions embedded in our budget. Regardless, once that estimated revenue amount was established, that set the target level for our expenditures. Previously fine-tuned expenditure budgets again were revisited in additional potential efficiencies and sacrifices were identified, yielding expenditures equal to revenues. Our next slide exhibits the origin of our revenues for the past five fiscal years. As you'd expect, by a large margin, the majority of our revenues will continue to come from local sources, principally taxes. Overall, given current and anticipated economic conditions, unlike previous years, revenues are projected to increase 1% or half the increase that was projected for the previous 2019-2020 school year. An increase in local and state revenues is anticipated, while a reduction in federal revenue is expected. As an aside, the decrease shown in the federal revenues is indicative of the refinancing that happened in October of 2019 of debt. For the old debt, we were receiving reimbursement from the federal government for a portion of the debt service payments that were made. Upon refinancing, those reimbursements were suspended. However, part of the increase in the state revenues that you see are a result of reimbursements we will receive on the refinanced debt going forward. Our next slide exhibits the primary source of our local revenues, which are real estate taxes. As previously discussed, the proposed tax rate will remain the same as it is currently at 18.65 mils. For current real estate taxes, both budgeted over the years, you will note that collections have equaled or exceeded expectations. The proposed budget for current real estate taxes reflects the anticipated collection rate of 94% or approximately 50.7 million, using the assessed value for properties in the district as of April 17th, 2020. As it relates to local revenues in general, there is a school of thought and a lot of the news about local revenue estimates being more conservative than usual, given the economic conditions. To an extent, this has been factored into our projection. For example, in our current school year for 2019-2020, included is interest income projected for $690,000. Thus far, year-to-date, we have recognized over $500,000 in interest income. With interest rates tumbling within the last month, this is expected to remain at or near the level in the future. Our 2020-2021 interest income is only anticipated to be approximately $100,000 at best. Though we reduced expectations for current collections of earned income, realty transfer, downtown business privilege taxes, it is expected that the more pronounced impact on the current economic conditions may actually affect us for the current school year. That is, if businesses are permitted to resume operations relatively soon, the timing of collection may be impacted for our next budget, but we're hoping that the dollar volume will recover. The next slide depicts the primary sources of state revenues. Those are the regular and special education subsidies and the subsidy for Social Security and state retirement. Approximately 9 million or 44% of state revenues are derived from subsidies for regular and special education. Each of those subsidies is based on a formula established by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. The regular education subsidy is actually driven by the average daily membership, it is, it is, I'm sorry, expected local effort measurements. The special education funding is actually based off of the 2013-2014, seven-year-ago allocation amount, adjusted slightly for special education student counts and other variables. 8.2 million or 40% of state revenue is derived from the state's reimbursement for Social Security and state retirement contributions. That is, the state reimburses the district amount equal to 50% of our quarterly reported wages. It should be noted that some are questioning whether the state will reduce its projected subsidies for the basic and special education funding. Within our budget, we have maintained what the budget proposed by the state funding is for the basic education and reduced slightly what is anticipated for the special education funding. Moving on to expenditures, expenditures on our next slide. Depicted in summary form by function is our expenditures budget. 52 million or approximately 63% of expenditures are classified as instructional. Support services, projected to be over 21 million or 25% of total expenditures, consist not only of administrative expenditures, but also facilities, health services, psychological counseling, and library services. The non-instructional functional expenditures are comprised of athletics, activities, and community services. 8.2 million or nearly 10% of total expenditures is attributable to debt service. Current principal outstanding debt is at approximately 54 million, with maturities scheduled through 2030. Other uses represent the contributions budgeted for the Capital Projects Fund. As high as 3 million in the most recently concluded fiscal year was established for contributions. No such contributions are scheduled for the 2020-2021 budget, accounting for a significant reduction in our expenditures. Similarly, $350,000 budgeted for contingencies has been removed from the proposed budget for the next school year. Another way to view expenditures is by objects. Our next slide depicts for the past five years expenditures classified in this manner. 73% or 60.7 million of expenditures are comprised of salaries and benefits. Salaries and wages within this budget are predicated upon primarily collectively bargained contractual obligations. As for benefits, though the state retirement contribution rate for the next school year increased less than 1%, it remains at 34.51% of our compensation, a substantial negative impact on available resources for the district. Purchased services of 10.6 million represents 13% of projected expenditures. The primary components of these, of these expenditures are transportation at 3.2 million and tuition at 3.6 million. It's important to note that within that $3.6 million projection for tuition is 1.2 million to continue to fund tuition for cyber and charter schools. Supplies and equipment of 3.8 million include not only tools and technology used in the classroom, but also utility charges such as natural gas and electricity. Our last slide is provided, is provided for perspective. It reflects the impact of the current tax rate on the homeowner with a median assessed value home of 135,700, and also for someone that may have a valued home at $200,000. We've recognized that such a tax bill represents a significant portion of a taxpayer's personal budget, even more so during times like these. We, as administrators and also the board, recognize and are mindful of this fact when drafting this budget. I will not take any questions you may have.
Um, thank you, Mr. Muth. I have some comments that I'd like to make, and then we will open it up for a board member discussion. Before we proceed, I'd like to outline some key items that are and are not included in the budget for next year, as I believe it is important for us to be very transparent with everyone. We are committed to supporting our schools, while at the same time, we are committed to the overall well-being of the entire North Hills community. Due to the extreme financial difficulties faced by many at this time because of COVID-19, we are supporting a budget without a tax increase. I would like to say before I go any further that it's very difficult to make budget decisions when we really don't know what education is going to look like next year because of COVID-19, and when we don't have any information from the state on when we might have that information. We are forced to make these decisions with limited information about what next year holds. And if some information does become available from the state between now and June 30th, when the final budget is due, it's possible that we could make adjustments. As Board President, I am committed to doing the best we can for the entire North Hills community, for our schools, and for the residents of Westview and Ross. We're not cutting any programs, and we are not cutting any curriculum. However, there are some areas where we were hoping to fill vacancies or add positions due to growth, where we will be taking a pause for next year with the intention of resuming growth once we are through this crisis. Next year, a few elementary classrooms will see a one-year temporary increase in allowed class size by two students per class in certain rooms in grades K through three. It is currently projected that this would only impact two classrooms based on current enrollment, with the potential to impact up to eight classrooms, depending on what happens with enrollment for next year. Just as a point of reference, there are going to be 97 elementary classrooms for next year, so this would impact less than 10% of the classrooms. A full enrollment and elementary class size report will be provided closer to the start of the school year. I'd like to clarify that the board is committed to not altering or raising our class size policy. We all recognize and value the importance of maintaining small classrooms and the benefits to both students and teachers for having small classrooms. Policy 205, which is our class size policy, states that, quote, "The superintendent shall have the discretion in adjusting class sizes and assignment of grade-level support personnel based on class composition or the nature of other extenuating circumstances." And I would certainly define this as an extenuating circumstance. I understand that this is going to be upsetting to some people, and I want to say with all sincerity that this is a difficult decision, and it is one that is personally upsetting to me as a parent and as a board member as well. This has the possibility to impact directly several of the board members who have children in these grades. In addition, we will be relocating the elementary assistant principal, Dr. Jessica Sapsera, to the middle school. She will be replacing Mrs. Mary Grimm, who was elected to return to the classroom as a sixth-grade teacher next year. This decision by Mrs. Grimm was made prior to the COVID-19 crisis. We will not be hiring a second assistant principal at the middle school level as we had planned, and we will not be hiring an assistant elementary principal for next year. Again, I am hoping that this is a temporary pause, and we can get back on track next year. I realize this is going to place an increased burden on our hard-working elementary principals, and I thank them for their understanding. I am confident that we will be able to make these adjustments work, but I realize that in a perfect world, we would have more administrative support at the elementary and the middle school level. Again, I personally have a child entering middle school next year, and I know other board members do as well, so our children are going to be directly impacted by this. We had hoped to hire another social worker or psychologist, but we will also be putting this on hold. And while I don't love outlining things that we will not be able to do, I think it's important to mention things that we would have liked to have been able to include in this budget, and we hope to include in future budgets. Because budgeting is always about future planning, we are also trying to include adjustments in the budget to improve the health and safety of our entire population, particularly in regards to COVID-19. As Dr. Manarino mentioned, we will be expanding our one-to-one iPad initiative to grades K through 12. This is critical to ensure all students have access to a device if we need to undertake some form of virtual learning next year. This does not mean that we know if we are going to have to have virtual learning next year, but it would be irresponsible for us to not plan for that possibility. We do not know what next year is going to look like, but we need to be prepared to be adaptive and responsive. If we are able to use these in the classroom, going one-to-one will minimize germ sharing so that each child has their own device and is not taking turns sharing a classroom set. Additional details on how these will be used in the younger grades will be forthcoming. If we are back in the building, we do not anticipate younger children hearing the iPads back and forth from school every day. They would remain in the classrooms overnight. Along these lines, we will also be replacing water fountains in all buildings and at the stadium with water bottle refill stations. Students will all be allowed to carry water bottles at school. We are rethinking all areas of facilities, buildings, and operations in this manner with an increased focus on health, hygiene, safety, and germ reduction. There are other areas of the budget that have been cut, including all items from the school board's minimal budget. We are asking all in our district to make sacrifices, and I firmly believe that this change starts with our leadership. This is a unique challenge for our district, but I have every confidence that we will rise above this as long as we continue to support each other and our community and provide a high-quality education. If you have additional questions or specific concerns about the budget that I have not addressed, I would invite you to attend our virtual not addressed, I would invite you to attend our virtual public budget committee meeting, which will take place on May fourteenth at seven PM. Registration details will be put out by the district soon, and I would also like to remind you that you may also always contact the board via email and that we have a contact form on our website. So having said that, I'm going to make a motion, and then we will have some board comments, if any board members have comments to make. So the superintendent recommends, and I so move that the board approve the 2020-2021 proposed final budget.
Dee Spade, I'll second it.
Thank you. Do we have any board member discussion at this time? Okay, there being none, I will proceed with a roll call vote. Yes, sorry, Ms. Philpot. Go ahead.
Sorry, I hit the raise hand button. It didn't work.
It did work. I didn't see it. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. I have a statement that I will read. I won't be voting yes to approve the budget tonight. I believe that big decisions such as approving budgets, and especially this budget for the upcoming school year, should only be made after involving the community, and then my vote should always be made with community feedback in mind. At our last meeting, we did tell the public that we are committing to a zero percent tax increase, and this past Monday, we did attach the proposed budget to our agenda. However, tonight is the first time that we are explaining what that will actually look like next year. Community members have not had time to form their opinions on this proposal, to ask us questions, questions, or to provide their feedback prior to us voting. Because of that, I just don't feel right voting to approve it. My vote of no is not directed at the makeup of the budget, although I do look forward to discussing it with the community as I struggle with some of it. My vote of no is also not meant at all to diminish the hard work that my fellow board members and our administration has done to get us to this point. My vote of no is more about feeling like I shouldn't vote at all until receiving community feedback. With this being a preliminary budget, we will be continuing to work on it until final version is passed, and I ask our community to please let us know if you feel that we are going down the right path during the next month. I look forward to incorporating your feedback into my vote next time.
Are there any other board member comments? Okay, I will proceed with a roll call vote then, Ms. Cozera.
Aye.
Mr. Little.
Aye.
Ms. Philpot?
No.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
I have to vote no on this, even though it's a preliminary budget. I agree with Deanna in regard to we were never given a lot of information on it. And another concern I've had is the budget committee consisted of three people, and that who isn't even here this evening to answer questions, Ally and Mr. Little. This is the first budget the two of them have ever been involved in. I have a concern that they thoroughly went through it and just didn't take a couple months. I also heard, this is through the grapevine, that we're getting our reprographics department's going to be gone. I hope that they put a lot of thought into that, because my concern is they'll be using private printers, and it'll cost a lot more money than using our reprographics. So therefore, I vote no.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so the motion carries six to two. Moving on to other items, regular finance items, we have the general fund bills, the capital project fund bills, the food service fund bills, budget transfers, payroll for the month of April 2020 in the amount of three million twenty-seven thousand three hundred nineteen dollars and fifty-eight cents, and a request that the board ratify awarding the bid for E-rate UPS switches and cabling service to D'Agostino Electronic Services in the amount of sixty-seven thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars. The superintendent recommends, and I so move that the board approve finance items three through eight.
Dee Spade, I'll second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. I'll now take a roll call vote. Ms. Cozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Ms. Philpot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Reed?
I have a question. With the budget transfers, and of course, Annette isn't there, the budget committee, did they look at all the budget transfers that were done last year? And I'm sure this year, with everything so tight, they're not going to be able to go over the allotted budget because where are they going to transfer the money from? But I guess you can't answer that.
I cannot.
Mrs., Annette would have the answer. She's not there. That's why she should be here. I'm very disappointed in her.
Okay, I'm going to continue on with the vote. I'm sorry, I lost track. Mrs. Spade, did I take your vote?
Yes, you did. I said yes.
Okay, thank you. And I also vote yes, so the motion passes eight to zero. I will now move on to policy and Ms. Cozera.
Hi, thank you. So I have, so as those of you who have been following along, we've been trying to review all of our policies, as many of them have at least appear to have a date where they haven't been reviewed in the recent past. So at the beginning of this year, we undertook to kind of start looking at them from an administrative perspective and see if we needed to make any changes. Unfortunately, we've run into a bit of a hurdle with with remote policy committee meetings. It's turns out it's very difficult to talk about policies on a Zoom call. So the policies we have that we're putting on for first reading are generally speaking, the changes are pretty minor, because we were, these are ones that we had, we did talk about previously, and/or the changes are just not something that required a lot of discussion from the policy committee. So as an informational item, policy three-ten abolishing position, the only changes we made to that were formatting changes. And then I have a number of policies to put onto the agenda for first, or first reading to put on the agenda for second reading next time. Policy four-ten abolishing a position for professional employees, policy two-twenty-four care of school property, four-twelve evaluation of professional employees, five-oh-four employment of classified personnel, seven-oh-eight lending of school-owned equipment and books, nine-oh-four public attendance at school events, and a new policy, which is policy eight-thirty-eight professional developer. With respect to nine-oh-four, I wanted to mention because a community member asked me about this. This talks, this policy generally talks about public being able to attend, you know, events that the school puts on, and there is some discussion of of the fundraising activities that can take place. And I wanted to mention that it's under authority. The board has the authority to bar the attendance of any person at a school event, and prohibits gambling and possession of use of controlled substances. With respect to gambling, that does not include our approved groups who fundraise at activities and events. That is something that the board approves specific to each group, and once those groups are approved, they are able to fundraise at our events. This is meant to, this language applies to groups that are not approved by the board. They're not permitted to fundraise at events. And so I will make a motion to add these, and now, of course, my internet has gone out. So here we go. I move the policy items two through eight be added to the May twenty-first, 2020 legislative meeting agenda.
Dee Spade, I'll second it.
Sandy.
Oh, second. Thanks, Dee.
Somebody contacted me about nine-oh-four.
Okay.
I am, but Dr. Manarino is trying to talk.
Somebody contacted me about nine-oh-four as well, and I'm going to reword a few parts of that, because there are events that are hosted by the North Hill School District that are not on North Hill School District property. For example, we play baseball at Herb Field, we play softball at Charmin Park. So I'm going to reword a little bit of that for the second reading. Mike, I believe it can still go on his first reading with a minor adjustment that talks about school-sponsored events and activities that are not on school district property.
Mr. Witherall, you're muted. One moment, let me unmute you, and then, okay, go ahead, Mr. Witherall.
Here we go. A minor change like that isn't a problem for the reading.
Okay. All right. Thanks very much. That makes sense.
Any other discussion? I will then take a roll call vote. Ms. Cozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Ms. Philpot?
Aye, and I'm sorry, I had a question, but the raised hand didn't work again. Can I ask now, or should I?
Can, is it pertinent to the vote, or can I continue taking the vote first?
I'm sorry?
Can I continue taking the vote first, or is it pertinent to the vote?
It is not. You can continue.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed? Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Spade?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Ms. Philpot, did you have a comment?
I have a question. The professional development policy, it's new for us. There is a section that says that that the district should have a professional education plan that should be submitted every three years to the Secretary of Education. I was just wondering if this is a new requirement or if this is something we currently do, and if it's something we currently do where we are in that three-year plan.
It is embedded in the strategic plan. It's a component of the strategic plan. We are a Phase Two strategic plan school. We were to have our strategic plan delivered to the state in the fall of this year. We have been moved to the spring of next year. So it's embedded in the previous strategic plan that we did. So we're on cycle to have that completed for the next strategic plan that'll be due March thirty-first of 2021.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to public comments on non-agenda items. If anybody from the public has any comments, I'll give you a moment to locate and use the raise hand feature. It does not appear that we have any public comments on non-agenda items. So I will move on to our closing announcements. A reminder again that the public budget committee meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May fourteenth, 2020 at seven PM on, it'll be a Zoom meeting again. That registration information will come out from the district shortly. And the next public meeting of the Board of Education is currently scheduled for Thursday, May twenty-first, 2020, at seven fifteen PM via Zoom. If there's no other business, I will then adjourn this evening's meeting. Thank you all very much.
Night, everyone.
Night. Have a great-